Thank you. KTOP, we are ready, please start. Welcome and thank you for joining us today, September 21st, 2024. My name is Teresa Nelson, a volunteer and member of the League of Women Voters of Oakland. We are pleased to have as our partners today AAUW Oakland Piedmont Branch, the Alameda County Bar Association, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Asian Immigrant Women Advocates, Center for Elder's Independence, Centro Legal de la Raza, East Bay Housing Organizations, National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Oakland Violence Prevention Coalition, the Piedmont Pines Neighborhood Association, and SPUR. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in our government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in issue advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues or ballot measures. This forum is presented by the education arm of the League, which does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties, nor take positions on issues or ballot measures. Before we introduce the candidates, I have a few logistical items to review. The candidates and our community partners have all agreed to participate under the guidelines set for this forum. The candidate forums today are being televised by KTOP, Oakland's cable access station, and livestreamed on the city's website, The forums are being recorded and can be viewed later on the League of Women Voters of Oakland's website or our YouTube channel. The recording of this event is owned by the League of Women Voters of Oakland. Filming or recording these sessions by anyone other than KTOP is not permitted. We're hosting in-person candidate forums for 13 Oakland races over two Saturdays, today and on October 5th. We are presenting eight sessions today and the remaining five on Saturday, the 5th, here in City Hall. The full schedule can be found on a poster outside the door or, again, on our website, l w v oakland dot org slash decide. This session is for the position of Oakland City Council Member for District 3. There are six candidates running for this position. They are Baba Afalabi, Carol Fife, Michelle Haley, Sean Hirsch, Warren Logan, and Maran Semedar. There will be six candidates listed on your November 5th ballot for this position. Sean Hirsch and Maran Semedar are candidates for this office who could not attend this forum, and they declined to submit a prepared statement in advance. The candidates participating today met the criteria for participation according to our protocols and ground rules, which you will find on the table outside for reference. So here is our process for today's forum. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for opening remarks. The speaking order has been randomly assigned. Then candidates will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question. If there is a lightning round, those answers will be limited to yes or no answers. Please, candidates, keep an eye on the timekeeper, who will signal you with different colored signs marked 30 seconds remaining, and stop. As the moderator, I may verbally give these prompts as well. There will be no separate rebuttals, however, the candidates may choose to use some or all of their one and a half minutes to rebut the response given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement in the reverse order from our opening statements. We'll be handling questions for the candidates in the following manner. Questions for this forum have been prepared in advance by the League of Women Voters and our partners. We will also take live questions from you, the audience. If you would like to ask a question, raise your hand, and one of our volunteers will give you an index card to write the question on. Please keep your questions succinct and directed to all the candidates, not to individual candidates, as I will ask each question of each candidate. We will try and include as many of your questions as time allows. Before we begin, candidates, in order to be heard on KTOP's broadcast, you will need to turn on your mic by pushing the on button in front of you and speaking directly into your microphone. When you are done speaking, please be sure to return your mic to the off position. And now, we will begin with the three candidates who are here with us today. Mr. Warren Logan, Mr. Baba Afalabi, and Ms. Carol Fife. And as I said, we've drawn the order and we'll begin with Mr. Logan. Our timekeepers are ready. You have your time for your opening statement. Please go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Warren Logan, and I am a candidate for Oakland City Council, District 3. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the amazing organizations who've brought this phenomenal forum together. It's this opportunity to educate voters is critical, and I really appreciate the work that all of you have put together for this. I'm running for Oakland City Council, District 3, because I want our streets to be clean, safe, and vibrant. I've heard from thousands of my neighbors how critical it is that we meet their issues with illegal dumping, that we address public safety challenges, both for our business owners and for our neighbors in our residential communities, and that we restore the dignity and the lifeblood of this entertainment district so that people can thrive and enjoy their time here in the city. I moved to Oakland about 10 years ago looking for a community. As a gay black man, I was looking for a safe place to call home, and I found that here. And I'm so excited to continue thriving in this community and bringing my work and expertise here. As a former city planner and director for the city, I brought the first testing sites during COVID. I also launched the nation's largest slow streets program and created the Flex Streets Program to support our small businesses during COVID. I'm proud to be a leader in the city, and I want to continue with your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Afalabi.
Hello, my name is Baba Afalabi, and thank you all for being here today, and thank you for putting this together. I'm a second-generation immigrant in Oakland. I've been living in Oakland for about 26 years. I'm a father and entrepreneur with a criminal justice background that I got from a custard award. I also have an MBA in organization leadership and strategy from John F. Kennedy. Like I said, last 10 years, 11 years, I've been building businesses in downtown, creating about three, four businesses that pretty much employ over 80 people. I believe that there's been a huge disconnect between our business corridor and the City Hall. And for me, it's been a challenge time in the last 10 years to operate in downtown Oakland. And as a father, I want Oakland to be a proud city that the children that I'm raising in Oakland can look back and say their father did have a contribution to the city of Oakland. We have a lot of at-risk youth that needs our help, that needs our connection, and I'm looking forward to see how we can help all the organizations that has been helping to build what Oakland is today. I'm a business owner, and I think a business mind and voice need to be on the City Council to give us a prosperous business corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fife.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you all today. I'm running a little late. I had Creek to Bay Day at two different parks, in District 3 at Mosswood Park and at Ramondi. And one of the things that I'm really proud of that we've been able to accomplish since I've been on the council is to put more attention into our parks like Ramondi. I was able to make sure that the Ballers did not go to Laney College, but came to West Oakland, because I'm determined to address the systemic ways that not only West Oakland has been impacted, but across the city. So I've been able to do things that other electives have been trying to do for decades. That's removing train tracks from parts of the West Oakland.
So pedestrians and bikers have safer streets. We've paved more streets in Oakland in the last five years than in the preceding 20. I've been able to bring $7.2 million to address the homelessness that we're experiencing at Mosswood and Ramondi and Wood Street and Fitzgerald Park to create the systems that we need to address what people care about most, and that's safety, housing, and homelessness. I'm committed to continuing that work that I've been doing as a nonprofit executive, but also a leader in Oakland that was voluntold to run for office, and I'm running again to continue that work. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And now we'll proceed with our questions. We'll begin with Mr. Logan. If you are elected, what would be your top priorities while in office? Please go ahead.
Thank you for that question. My top priorities are what I've heard from my neighbors. So I'll just repeat again. Making sure our streets are clean of illegal dumping, addressing public safety, both with community partners and with supporting our police department, and making sure that our entertainment districts and our small businesses are thriving. And what is critical is that we're doing that with community voices and doing so with strong leadership. I also think it's critical that our city leaders are using every opportunity we can to bring in new funds as we consider our deficit. I'm sure we'll talk about that today. That also includes hiring staff to make sure we are not missing key deadlines for public safety dollars that our residents critically need. Those are the top three priorities that I've heard from my neighbors. Clean, safe, and vibrant. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Afalabi.
For me, like I said earlier, as a small business owner, and like Mr. Warren clearly said, we're going to need funding. And when you look at the contribution of our revenue, the business play a huge role in that. So my focus is making sure that we have a corridor that is actually downtown, that is working for everybody. Also, to understand that we're doing so, we need a safety measure. So how can I participate to bring a sensible solution to our safety issue? For one, like I said earlier, I'm a criminal justice, I have a criminal justice background. How can I use a public, what do you call it, community policing as a vehicle to get our youth to understand that police is not an enemy, but a collaborative effect to really make our community safe? And also cleanliness, blight is everywhere. I just ran three mile across West Oakland today, and the blight that I saw there last month is still there today. So figuring out how can we get that done, particularly bringing funding to Oakland so that we can build more housing for our residents, and also making sure that our business can have a sustainability to operate in Oakland. There's more businesses closing today than we were during pandemic. And that's not by mistake, but it's by the inaction that has been happening in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fife.
My three priorities are affordable housing and homelessness, advancing the right of individuals to realize access to affordable housing at all income levels, bolstering the economy, and increasing community safety. Around the human right to housing, I'm working with the County of Alameda to utilize tax-defulted properties in order to have quick access and site control to spaces that can be stood up immediately. So I'm partnering with nonprofits, nonprofit developers, and the County of Alameda to address the 50 parcels and vacant units in my district that can be utilized immediately. I also recently talked about the encampment resolution grant that we brought in through my advocacy, bringing neighbors into the conversation about homeless encampments in their districts. That is why 24th and MLK, Wood Street, and Fitzgerald Park were cleaned up, and we actually housed the people that were there, the people who accepted housing. We're also stepping up and working with our Human Services Department to purchase the extended state in Emeryville in District 3 to move the individuals who are currently unhoused into places with bathrooms, with cooking stations in their units, so they can get off the streets immediately. That is what I'm doing around housing. I'm working with our small businesses in the downtown corridor to create a nightmare. It sounds crazy, it's not a nightmare, but it's a mayor at night that would manage the downtown economic engine for the city and get people engaged in that way as well. I have a bunch of things that I'm doing. We can talk more later.
Thank you. We'll begin the next round of questions with Mr. Afalabi. Do city council members have a conflict of interest, given that they participate in negotiations for city workers' compensation and also receive contributions for their campaigns from these workers' unions?
I believe they do, because we have a large population of city workers that doesn't leave in Oakland. About 80% of the Oakland staff does not leave in Oakland. And when you have union that's backing candidates, that can create a conflict of interest. And when that union is representing workers that doesn't even likely leave in Oakland, that creates another layer of problem that we've seen. So having said that, I believe that our campaign funding should strictly be coming from our community or the city themselves. Like the funding that we currently have that's helping candidates that doesn't raise enough money, I think we need to emphasize more on that and really having a limited budget, because this is a local election. There's no need to be having $100,000 or $150,000 to run for this kind of office. So I think there need to be more restriction on that, and I support having a restriction on having a union be so influential on our election. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fife.
The reason that labor unions are so active and have been active over the last year in politics is because big money beats out the working class every single time. So I do not believe it is a conflict of interest for the individuals who are on City Council to advocate for the people who are cleaning up our streets. The argument of if it's a conflict of interest doesn't come up with the Oakland Police Department, who the majority of police officers don't live in this city either, nor does it come into play when we're talking about negotiating their salaries and the power, the outsized power that the police unions have. The League of Women Voters has done amazing work around democracy dollars and ranked choice voting to make the playing field more even for women and people of color to participate in elections. And I'm proud to have stood with that work even before I was an elected official to even the playing field. But right now, if there weren't labor unions who are the everyday workers of the city doing the work and advocating politically, then we would not have the type of robust involvement in the political system that could rival big money like Big Tech and Big Real Estate, who otherwise control politics at every other level of government.
Thank you. Mr. Logan.
Thank you for that question. I think it's critical that we highlight, as we're in city chambers now, just how important accountability and transparency is for every leader in this city. When you consider how our city council does its work in daylight for every other contract, whether it's paving, whether it's contracting for macro, for outside help, right? That is done in public. And I think it's absolutely critical that all of the negotiations that happen with our labor unions are also brought into the daylight. I also want to be really upfront, though, that I also support our labor unions, right? That it is incumbent on our city council to bring to light all of the great work that our staff are doing. They are busting their butts for us. I'm going to say that again, busting their butts, cleaning up trash, paving our roads, right? And I think it's a shame that we are not then putting all of their hard work in a transparent way. So again, I'm going to repeat, we have to make sure, thank you, that when we are negotiating with our labor unions, that it is done in a public way, so that all of you residents know how we got to the decisions we did in accepting those types of contracts. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. Our next question also relates to finance and budget, which has been much in the news lately here in Oakland. And Ms. Fife, you'll go first on this question. Tell us what efficiencies, cost-cutting measures, and revenue increases would you propose to help balance our budget?
I'll be direct and say that I'm taking leadership from the individuals who do that every single day for a living in the city of Oakland. So what I'm working on is partnership with the City Administrator's Office in addition to our Finance Department to get an understanding of where things are, the concrete lay of the land, and what needs to happen to ensure that we can move forward with the right policies in our budgeting process. So we started this process a lot earlier than we typically do. We actually started after the last mid-cycle budget to bring in outside professionals to do an audit of our city finances to know what needs to take place. It's premature at this particular moment to discuss what needs to happen, but I will say that I am proud to have brought in additional new revenues of funding through our film industry that I worked to bring to the city of Oakland and a host of other businesses that will be opening in the downtown and West Oakland corridors in the next few weeks, actually. So one of the things we need to do is ensure that we are creating new revenue streams. We are making sure that our staff that are in revenue-generating departments are working full-time and collect the revenues from business taxes, and it's not fun, but ticketing and all those other things that bring in revenue to the city, and that those things are actually working optimally for the city of Oakland. So I think it's a little premature, but the process has begun to evaluate where things are, and we've also identified outside support to analyze the decisions that are being made by our Finance Department.
Thank you. Mr. Logan.
You're right, everyone is talking about the city budget. And I want to make sure everyone in this room and online understands that we not only have a deficit for this year, we have a structural deficit that we need to address immediately. I want to respond to something that Councilmember Fife just said, though, that we hired an outside auditor to understand what's going wrong. And what's challenging is we have an inside auditor. We have people in our staff who are already telling us what the challenges are. We've known for several years now that this deficit was going to hit us across the face. The three sources of revenue that are down are transient occupancy tax, that's the hotel tax, the transfer tax, people are not buying and selling homes as much as they used to, and the development fees. We are not building enough in this city. We have to do way more to grow our city revenues, the first of which is making sure that we hire, and I said this earlier, grant administrators. This city is incredibly powerful at getting grants from the state and the federal government. When I was a director in the mayor's office, we won almost $100 million in transportation funding. So that's where I'd start, is getting other people's money before we even think about taxing our own again. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. Mr. Afalabi.
I really love this question, because the way you really get ahead of revenue is it's getting ahead of it before it hits you in the face. So first of all, I believe that right now, we're not bringing in enough money, right? So when you look at the impact fee that the city assessed on building, we have assessed about $90 million, and we've only collected about $27 million of it. So we're not doing our job to collect the money in. That's about $60 million that's sitting on the table. Talking about collecting money from small businesses, the reality is I'm a small business owner, and we don't feel valued in the City Hall. We don't see the support that we need. So collecting sales tax is challenging. I have a business that I have to shut down that will make over $1 million every year, and we're paying over $100,000 in sales tax. It's a challenge to pay those money and still see that we're not getting the support that we need. Another thing that I think we're lacking on is activating our tourist industry. I believe that there's a three key point that I really pointed out on my website that we can energize our, what do you call it, our tourist market. Like Mr. Logan said, we're not getting the transient tax. The hotel tax is not coming in, but when you don't have people that find Oakland attractive, they're not going to come in. So we need to understand that property will be only built if they find Oakland valuable and attractive to building. And businesses are only going to open if we find it the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. And on to our next question, which deals with small businesses. And we'll begin with Mr. Logan. How specifically would you support small businesses, not four or five years down the road, but next year in 2025? Please go ahead.
Thank you for this question. District 3 is the city's entertainment hub. We are also 80% of the city's general fund revenues. It is critical that we support our small businesses. I think we can all hopefully agree on that. There are a number of strategies immediately that we could do to support them, the first of which, and we've all said this, is addressing public safety. I've met with so many of our local business owners that are tired of their windows getting broken. They cannot go to their insurers anymore because they have been dropped. That's unacceptable. The second is that we need to address our permitting process. There are a lot of folks who want to open businesses in the city, and they are stuck behind two years of permitting red tape just to open a business in the city. And again, that's unacceptable. Working towards provisional licenses so that more people can open their doors sooner is the answer. The final piece, though, is that Oaklanders want to enjoy Oakland. While we're talking about, you know, and thank you Baba for this, but you know, while obviously we want others to find our city attractive, we find our city attractive. And so let's celebrate what makes Oakland so powerful by opening up the special events permit program and revisiting what I had created was the Flex Streets Program during COVID that allowed people to use parklets for free, engaging our public streets so that people could feel alive in our commercial districts more. So again, public safety, provisional licenses, and activating our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Afalabi.
Thank you for that question. For me, the first thing first is, like Mr. Logan said, is to try to ensure that people can open businesses easier. As somebody that has built, I've built three different storefronts. It's so hard to get through permitting, so I know that. And that need to be more streamlined. Secondly, is funding, funding, funding is what small businesses need. We've borrowed money so many times that we can't even go back to the bank. So I'm going to propose a retention of funding where small businesses can get a quick loan and pay it back, or we get it back in some other form. Also, what I want to also initiate is the activation of vacancies. I did that in 2011 when we have Occupy Oakland at the back of the housing market crash. We need to talk to the landlords and say, hey, if you can give each person opening business six-month rent abatement, and the city can support another six-month abatement, that way, a business owner have a whole year to see what the health of their revenue is going to be like. Another thing is also creating an exchange between our homeless and government. Like Ms. Fife just noted, that they got $7.2 million from the state. However, none of that is articulated to our small business. Imagine if we can award 15% of that to small businesses. That's about roughly $1,080,000. You can probably save about four businesses from closing right now. But when you don't have a business-minded person in the office, they cannot think creatively like that, and I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fife.
I just want to highlight the amazing staff that we have in our Economic and Workforce Development Department who work on business development every single day and who are working with me and our small business corridors throughout District 3, Jack London Square, Lake Merritt, Uptown Downtown, around what they want to see when it comes to small businesses and the support they need. Unfortunately, the city of Oakland doesn't fund businesses. That's not our responsibility. But what we can do is create the climate that makes it easier for them to operate. So we have, in the city, hired a team to do a hiring blitz, because a lot of what you all are experiencing is deep deficits in the number of staff that we have in critical departments. That includes planning and building, where we have a 30% vacancy. DOT is the same way with over 100 vacancies in the department. So a lot of the problems that you see have to do with decades of issues that, that's why I ran in the first place, to address those issues, to get our staffing up, which is why we had the hiring blitz to begin with in the first place, and then to work with those small businesses on bringing in additional resources that I'm currently working with our lobbyists to do. We don't have the funds in 1010, which is our general-purpose fund, but we can do amazing things like we're doing with, in support of Love Our Lake, in support of other businesses and entities that are activating space like I've been able to do in West Oakland with the West Oakland Farmers Market and our night markets. That haven't happened before. I brought the night market and the West Oakland Farmers Market. It's had dramatic changes.
Thank you. Our next question will be about housing, and we'll begin with Mr. Afalabi. Are we doing a good job really measuring the impact of the kinds and amounts of spending we make on housing? And what would be your one or two concrete strategies to get more affordable housing in Oakland?
Thank you for that question. I think we all know how challenging it is to build affordable housing. I think when I look at the research, I see that funding is always the problem. Eble just tried to launch a $10 billion bond that they have to retract. For me, I believe that we probably need to start looking at international investment, because we know our domestic investors understand the intricacy and nuances around affordable housing. And also, I think we need to look at international market and see how we can fund affordable housing being built. We have 4,000 empty lots in Oakland. So we are a metropolitan city, eighth-largest city in California. So all those lands need to be built, right? So we need to make it attractive again. Secondly, on housing, I believe that we need to introduce another form of rental, right? We have affordable, which is calculated by AMI. I believe that we need to start thinking about linking affordable housing to minimum wage, which I call Minimum Housing Program, whereby we have some housing that will be dedicated to our city workers, teachers, police, essential workers, and service workers. They can get benefit from, because a lot of market rate don't want to have anybody that's coming from affordable housing. rate don't want to have anybody that's coming from affordable housing. So minimum wage can be a way to get, minimum housing can be a way to get people into homes that needs it. So those would be my two, three things to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Five.
Thank you, thank you. Housing is complicated in California because it is so ridiculously expensive to live here. I pay more than 60% of my income in rent. I'm rent burdened, and it's impossible for me to buy something. So I'm essentially locked out of a market that doesn't work for most people, not to mention if you're a senior, or if you're a student, or if you have disabilities. The, the thing that I did when I was first in office is to pass a ballot measure to allow for the development of 13,000 units of social housing, which we're going to start with a pilot and model at the Malanga Center because it's city owned property already. There are 70 units that can be converted from SROs into affordable units for Oakland's artist community, and we just need to get it done. But money is the issue. It's a tragedy that, it was not EBHO like Mr. Olafabi mentioned, Afolabi mentioned. It was not an EBHO initiative. It was a regional housing ballot initiative called BAFHA. It was RM4, and it was a 10 to $20 billion ballot measure that would have created the funding source to create our own public bank of sorts that would have funded affordable housing development in nine regions throughout the, 121 cities in the Bay Area. It didn't pass. Hopefully, we're going to be able to bring a few, bring it forward in the next few years. But that is the type of injection that we need for PSH, Permanent Support of Housing, and to, to fund the different projects that we need to get off the ground here. The rent is too damn high, and it's too expensive to build, but we have the ways to do that through social housing.
Thank you, Mr. Logan.
Thank you for this question. Affordable housing is critical to everyone, and it is no surprise, and I think everyone in this room can agree, that it is really expensive to live in California, and it's exceptionally expensive to live in the city of Oakland. It costs almost $1 million to build one unit of housing, of market rate housing. And it also costs $1 million to build one unit of affordable housing. And I'm glad that both of my peers here have mentioned the cost of building housing, but one of the issues that I want to drive even farther is that part of that cost is driven by delays from this city specifically. It takes upwards of five years to get what's called entitlement, the permit you receive to build housing in this city. And that's unacceptable. So you asked, are we holding ourselves accountable to meeting this need that we all agree is so critical? No, we're not. It doesn't seem like any of us are in a hurry to address the crisis we all agree is happening all around us and that we're all experiencing. So as your future city council member, I'm, I'm laser focused on making sure that we are getting out of the way of ourselves, building more housing, and finally, using our own city lots to build more affordable housing. Look no further than 1911 Telegraph. It's right down the street. That's a city lot that should have had housing on it, and the person sitting to my right blocked that affordable housing. And that's unacceptable.
Thank you. On to our next question, which is about violence prevention. And we'll begin with Ms. Five. What measurable impact have violence prevention programs under Measure Z truly had in Oakland?
Will there be an opportunity to fact check in these places? I was just accused of doing something that didn't happen, so are we going to have?
You can use your time as you wish.
Okay, perfect. 1911 Telegraph was a project that was being developed by three, two different developers and Oakland and the World Enterprises. Two of the developers pulled out because they were consistently harassed by Oakland and the World. One of the developers that is currently starting a project at the Lake Merritt Bart Station was harassed, and his wife was harassed by one of the developers, and had to pull out because of the way that they were treated by their partner. So I just want to be clear that I didn't block anything, and the city of Oakland's economic and workforce development and real estate departments will confirm that. There's, there are ways to fact check information. I think it's important that we tell the truth when we have these positions and the opportunities to do so. I have spurred a number of amazing projects and helped push through the permits on several development projects throughout the city of Oakland. And the developers, if you ask them directly, will tell you that. We want development without displacement. And I am supporting this current ballot measure to provide additional safety resources through measure, I believe it's Measure N. But it's just a drop in the bucket. We need to make sure that our fire, police, and our safety organizations are funded as much as we can. So everybody support that ballot initiative. I'm not sure if I can say that in here. But I, I hope I'll be able to pick up on the rest of that question. I just had to check the record on that misinformation that was just presented.
Next, Mr. Logan.
Are you able to repeat the question?
Yes. What specific measurable impacts have the violence prevention programs funded under Measure Z actually had here in Oakland?
Thank you. I'm happy to answer that question. So first, I want to say that I'm in support of Measure NN, which is the reauthorization of Measure Z. It's critical that we fund our strategies for public safety. I don't think anyone I've heard from knocking in Claussen or Hoover Foster on Seventh Street, or in my neighborhood on Adeline, feel safe enough. We, we need to be doing more. It is absolutely critical, though, that we, as a city, are partnering with local stakeholders, that we cannot just respond with a badge and a gun. We've learned that too many times, that we must center community voices and partner with each other to make sure we all make each other feel safe. What I'm looking for as, you know, future council member here, is to not only think about funding the police department or partnerships about public safety that way, but looking at activating our public streets. It's critical that we are, are being more innovative in the ways that we're solving public safety. Again, not just with a badge and a gun, but looking for ways to make our neighborhood feel naturally safe with better street lighting. There's plenty of streetlights on Seventh Street that are out, and we have not fixed those. So I'm challenging the city to make sure that our maintenance is being done in efforts to make our community feel safe as well. So thank you.
Mr. Afolabi.
Yes, thank you. As, as somebody with experience in criminal justice, I know for sure that, you know, militarizing police is now worth of crime or, or reduce crime. It's come from the community. For me, it's about really reaching out to our at-risk youth to ensure that they are engaged. You know, the 10, 14 years old that we have right now, a lot of them are crying out that there's not enough activity to get them off the street or, or be active. So that's something that I'm hoping that we can do. And again, I support any measure that I want to address our safety measure. So if you guys hear this, everybody kept going back to the money. So if you don't have somebody with, with a, with a business frame, business minded mindset, we will not get the funding that we need to do any of this initiative that, that's in place, because everybody want to get paid when they do their job. Let me just say that for a fact. Secondly, it's going back to say, okay, our youth, what are they feeling like? How, how are we engaging them? Ensuring that we have programs, like I have a thing called inter-district sports, which is going to be like an Olympic, that's going to get the police, get the city council members, and get the DA office to be working together to have an activity that connects the correction department, law enforcement department, and the, and the city and the community together annually, so that we can have, we can see people policing us. Also, like 90% of the Oakland police does not live in Oakland. So we have an opportunity to bring in new, our police officers that live in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And this will be our last question, so that we may end on time. And we'll begin with Mr. Afolabi. How do you plan to work with constituents on their complaints about illegal dumping, potholes, traffic safety, public safety, and the building permit process, given that regulation of these areas is the responsible of city departments, the mayor and the city administrator, not the council? What is your proposal?
Thank you. I think one of the biggest asset we have as your future council member is that relationship, relationship, relationship. It's using my relationship to have a conversation with this department health and tell them how important it is we need to get behind things that's going to put our, our city in a better light. So for me, it's understanding that, and how do you work with people, and being able to show, literally writing the business plan and proposing how we can all work together. Because as a city council member, I believe you have an influence on all these departments. You can legally tell them what to do, but you are, they're your friends, and they're your colleagues. So how do you engage people, all these departments that had to ensure that, that happened? And again, we can talk all we want, but also go back to the budget, because they're going to tell you, okay, even if I want to do that, how do I fund this endeavor? So as a city, we really need to understand that we run smooth when we have money coming in. I highlighted to, I highlighted one of the, one of the pivotal issue that we have is the deficit. So even if all these departments want to do what they want to do, they're still going to go back to funding. So if we're not having a business minded person on that council, we won't get creative with how we bring money in. It's easy to make things work on paper. Actuality is where it's at. And that's what I want to base all of this on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan.
You know, I'm going to say this again, accountability is so critical when it comes to being a leader in this city. Just answering your emails, being present for your constituents, and making sure that their, their voices feel heard is critical. What we do with those voices is also the question, though, right? It's, it's not just about saying, I'm going to go pick up that piece of trash with my trash truck. It's, I'm going to look for the deeper issue for why trash is on our streets in the first place. And I'll give you the answer to that. It's that our waste management contract, which is coming up for reauthorization, is the, the source of this problem. We are encouraging people to dump in our streets. You know, Baba has mentioned a couple of times how critical it is to, to bring a business mindset. And I, I want to remind folks that this job is about policy. It's about action, and it's about results. And while I totally respect your point, one of the challenges that, that our, our, our government has is that it is not a business. We cannot fail, right? We cannot turn people away. And so again, I remind everyone on this day is that it is critical, not only that we are being accountable to our residents by answering their voices and answering their calls, but then looking for those deeper solutions with policy, to making sure that whatever money we receive, we are spending it effectively and in good daylight and accountability, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Five.
There is no one running in this election in 2024, or probably throughout the entire city and county, that has the community relationships that I have. I started bringing regular everyday residents into my meetings with department staff when I realized that they have the ability to move policy forward, and it wasn't happening. So because city council members cannot direct staff, I brought in my residents to talk to staff, so they would hear directly from them. And I do that with all of my major meetings, with all of the directors, because when, when our directors and our staff hear directly from residents, then they can't say, like, they're going to block something that Councilmember Five has because they don't like Councilmember Five. They hear from the people, and that is what I'm about, because that's where the power is. So making sure resident voice is a part of every decision that I make is something that we've recently seen with our minority contracting, our, our affordable housing developers that are trying to build. And it's important that the relationships that I have with, like the community ready corps, our churches to clean up our streets are actually happening, because those are the relationships that I bring to the table that no one has, that can pick up the slack. Because when you're doing things right, people won't know you're doing anything at all. But when things go wrong, they want to blame you for everything that they see. And it is up to us, like JFK said, ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. We are in that moment in Oakland where it's going to take all of us to create the city that we want to see.
Thank you. Now we will have a very brief, what we call a lightning round. I'll ask four questions, and please just say yes or no. Okay? And I'll begin, each one of you will, will begin a question. There'll be, there'll be three, sorry. There'll be three, because we have to stay on time. So Ms. Five will begin with you. First, this is the question. Do you approve of expanding the use of surveillance cameras, yes or no?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Afolabi?
Yes.
Great. And then we'll start with Mr. Logan. For the next question, do you approve that the city of Oakland is selling the stadium site as a means of solving its budget issues, yes or no?
No.
Mr. Afolabi?
No.
Ms. Five?
That's not true.
I asked for yes or no.
The frame is wrong. That's not.
Okay, we will move on then. Thank you. And then, Mr. Afolabi, you'll begin with this question. Should Oakland change its policies in light of the Supreme Court's Grants Pass decision, which allows cities to impose criminal penalties for public camping or sleeping, yes or no?
No.
Ms. Five?
No.
Mr. Logan?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, it is time for the candidates to do their closing questions. They will each have a minute to make these closing statements, and we will begin with Ms. Five.
My name is Carol Five. I did not come to run, to be a politician, and climb up the ladder of politics. I came to get the work of the people done. In three years, I've done things that council members have not been able to do in decades. Bringing economic revitalization to West Oakland, a place that's been disregarded and racially just piled on for generations. I'm turning that around. And when I knock on doors, I hear people say that I'm seeing change happen that I've never seen before. And that is because my deep care and love for this city. Everyone that's running right now is running to do the things that I'm already in the process of doing. I'm asking for support and another opportunity to build on, making sure we have green social housing, making sure we have real answers to homelessness, making sure black people actually have a say at the table in their lives in this city, and making sure we create an Oakland that is accessible to everyone, because we are one family, and we need to unite around some of the most challenging periods in this, in this city to get it done right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan.
I thought you were going to Baba next. You know, thank you again. And I, I started my opening by thanking the League of Women Voters, and now I'm going to thank the people that I've met along the way. I have knocked on doors in Claussen and Hoover Foster, in downtown, in Dogtown. The, the voters and, and the residents of this district are the most joyous, diverse people I've ever met. And they are tired of talk. They want results. They want their streets to be clean. They want their streets to be safe, and they want the, the joy and the vibrancy to return to our city. I'm excited to be the next city council member for District Three because I know how it, what it takes to get it done, not in four years, but in one year, in, in one month. Launching the Slow Streets program in a month, launching the Flex Streets program in a month, setting up testing sites in less than a year before the county. I know how to deliver results in my first term, not my second. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Afolabi.
Hello, my name is Baba Afolabi again. I believe we have to understand that the only way to predict the future is to look at the past. We are all here because we don't feel what the current agent that we have is saying that we, we feel. So to change the future is to really act now, understanding that we need a new energy infused in the city council. Also, I'm sure a lot of you guys went to college and, or high school. There's a reason why it takes four years to accomplish your objective. Right now, you have four years to accomplish your objective when you have somebody telling you that I need more. No, four years is what everybody's given, so that we can feel, we can trust that you can deliver it again. And we haven't felt that in four years, and I'm, and I'm appalled to hear that things I'm working on when it's about year four. So I'm Baba. There's nobody like me. I'm different than anybody that's running that, or that is on city council right now. City council need a business minded person on that council so that we can really do what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Oakland and our community partners who are listed on the screen, I want to thank the candidates. We are grateful for your participation today. We also want to thank the audience for coming today to meet the candidates and proposing thoughtful questions. This forum will be rebroadcast on KTOP, Oakland's Government Access Cable Station, on Channel 10, on Xfinity, Comcast, or Channel 99 on AT&amp;T U-verse. The recordings will be posted on the League of Women Voters of Oakland's website, lwvaukland.org/decide, and on our YouTube channel. For further information about the upcoming forums, the candidates, and the ballot measures, please visit the League's website. We encourage voters to look to vote411.org, our award winning, personalized voter resource. You can see what will be on your specific ballot and find expanded information about the candidates and the ballot measures. Members of the League of Women Voters do the hands on work to defend democracy and empower voters. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping important issues to keep our community strong. If you would like to be involved with the men and women helping to make democracy work for everyone, it's easy to join the League. We encourage you to visit our website, lwvaukland.org. You can also follow us on Facebook, on Instagram, Twitter, X, and our YouTube channel. And look for our voter education materials, such as the Easy Voter Guides, Pros and Cons, and more, that are distributed in print and online, and many of these are available in multiple languages. Election Day is November 5. If you've moved or changed your name, or you wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you will need to re-register. Online voter registration is available at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. website, sos.ca.gov. It is secure, and it's easy to do. The deadline to register to vote is October 21, 2024. Remember that in Alameda County, every voter will be mailed a ballot. You can vote early at one of the 24 vote centers around Oakland, or vote by mail simply by filling out your ballot and making sure you have signed the outside of the envelope, return it via US mail, no postage required, or drop it off at one of the many Dropbox locations around Oakland. Please encourage your family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers to vote. In Alameda County, if you miss the October 21 deadline, you may register conditionally and vote provisionally in person at the Register of Voters office, or at one of the many vote centers throughout the county. More about this is available at acvote.alamedacountyca.gov. This concludes our forum. Thank you very much.